Thank you. Welcome to the meeting of the Town of Chatham Planning Board for August 17, 2020. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Town of Chatham Planning Board. Please note that this meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 18 and is also being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. I do need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It's all right to record the meeting, but you need to notify the Chair. I don't see anyone recording the meeting. So first, before we begin, I will go through some points regarding our remote meeting procedures pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 947-890-42Pound. That's 947-890-42Pound. You may also join the meeting via Teams on your computer, and you may do this by clicking on the link that is in the Agenda on the Town's website. So again, before we begin, just a few points about our remote meeting. I'd like to ask everyone that if you're not speaking, that you would mute your microphones either on the computer or on your phone. And that also, if you're on the computer, could you turn off your video if you are not speaking? So for everyone who's not speaking, please turn off your video. This helps to maintain the clarity of the broadcast. And also, for the remote meeting, we will follow certain procedures. I will begin with the roll call of all Planning Board members to be sure that Board members are present. Also, there should be one person speaking at a time. That person will be recognized by the Chair. I will ask for public comments. There will be time for public comments, and I will recognize you by name. Please note that neither I nor Ally has the ability to see the raise hand function, so don't use that. Just speak your name, and I will recognize one person. And then please repeat your name before you begin speaking. And if you're connected by telephone, please repeat the last four digits of your phone number, just so that we can always clearly identify every speaker. All right. And so I've come to the point, after an agenda item has been discussed by the public body, we will request any comments from members of the public. Also, we won't, I don't think we'll be taking any votes this meeting, but if we do, all votes are taken by roll call. And also, as we have been doing when we do comments and questions from the Planning Board, I will do that by roll call. I'll go through you, through your names, one by one, and ask for comments or questions. And at the end of the meeting, we will adjourn with a verbal confirmation noting the time of adjournment. So before we begin, I would again like to introduce our new Planning Board member, Roger Griffin, who is joining us as a participating Board member tonight. All the paperwork's been done. And Roger, I think from all of us, we'd just like to say that we're very happy to have you join the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. Now, tonight's meeting, there's really just one agenda item. It's a special meeting, and we are having a special presentation on form-based code. And this presentation will be given by the Cape Cod Commission. We have with us Chloe Schaefer, who is the chief planner of the Cape Cod Commission and is very knowledgeable about form-based code. We also have Sarah Korchev and Martha Hevener. We're both planners with the Cape Cod Commission, very familiar with the Town of Chatham. We've worked extensively with them before. And Elizabeth Callum, who is a community design planner with the Cape Cod Commission. So we're very happy to have them with us tonight, and they will be giving us a presentation on form-based code. Before they begin, oh, and also I'd like to introduce that our principal planner for the Town of Chatham is with us tonight, Ally Sabatino, as well as the Director of our Community Development Department, Katie Donovan, also with us tonight. Before we get started with the presentation on form-based code from the Cape Cod Commission, I just wanted to give you a brief introduction, a brief history of what this is all about and why we're having this meeting.
Catherine?
Yes.
Sorry. Before we get started, I'm not sure. I might have missed it, but did you do a roll call vote to open it?
No, I didn't. So let's do that first. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
So let's start with the roll call of the Board, just to make sure everyone's present. I understand that Arthur Spru cannot join us tonight. So Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, present.
Thank you. Warren Shane?
Warren Shane, present.
Thank you. Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, present.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, present.
And Roger Griffin? I think, Roger, you may be on mute.
On mute. Roger Griffin, present.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern, and I am also present. So thank you, Ally, for the reminder. So let's begin with a little background on why we're having this meeting on form-based code. As most of you know, the Town of Chatham has a comprehensive plan. And that comprehensive plan was voted in unanimously at Town Meeting in 2003. I was at the meeting, as were my parents, and it was quite an event. The comprehensive plan was the culmination of some 10 years of work by a number of volunteer committees, chaired ultimately by Richard Batchelder. And there was a lot of work and thought put into the comprehensive plan for the Town of Chatham. It was finally completed and voted in unanimously at Annual Town Meeting in 2003. As I recall, at that event, everybody stood up and cheered and threw their hats in the air. It was a very good time. The comprehensive plan, as many of you know, presents the foundation of what the Town's vision is for its present and its future. The Town of Chatham, as you know, is a very beautiful place. It has a lot of natural beauty as well as architectural beauty. It's a wonderfully livable town. It's a warm community. It also wants to preserve its historic heritage in terms of the architecture and the aesthetics of the town. All of these principles have been incorporated into the comprehensive plan, as well as the vision of keeping Chatham viable, a viable economically strong and demographically diverse community, providing housing at all levels, to provide housing for young families and seniors and single adults, as well as people who own second homes here, and so on. So once the comprehensive plan was passed at Annual Town Meeting in 2003, it was given to the Planning Board to look at the protective zoning bylaws of the Town of Chatham and to recommend amendments to bring those bylaws to be in conformity with the comprehensive plan. The basic set of bylaws that we were using are, were put into implementation in 1987, I believe. And the comprehensive plan was voted in in 2003. And to make a long story short, there's a lot of differences. The bylaws, as they stand, do not actually encourage and allow the type of development and redevelopment that the comprehensive plan calls for. So when I first joined the Planning Board some years ago, we were in the middle of this process. There were a couple of approaches that had been attempted that had not been fruitful. And so we were looking for a new approach. And the approach that came forward was to divide the activity into parts, that it was too big of a project to try to rewrite, completely rewrite the protective zoning bylaws of Chatham all at once, but to take it part by part and implement the comprehensive plan in that way. So shortly after that, in 2013, the Board of Selectmen asked the Cape Cod Commission to do a visioning study for us along a certain section of the Route 28 corridor, I think from the town, from the entrance into the town going up to Crow Road. And that was the study area along the Route 28 corridor. And they wanted to take just that area of town and ask the Cape Cod Commission to take a close look at that and evaluate that and produce some recommendations about how we needed to amend the protective zoning bylaws in the Town of Chatham to be, to bring them into conformity with the comprehensive plan vis-à-vis that particular study area along Route 28. So in 2013 and 2014, the Cape Cod Commission did a very comprehensive visioning study. I believe Martha Hevener was involved in that, along with others from the Cape Cod Commission. It was a very complete study. They worked very closely with the community. They did a lot of workshops and gathering information from the community in order to produce the recommendations about bringing the bylaws into conformity with the comprehensive plan in that study area. I should mention that along that study area are several of what we call our neighborhood centers, which are discussed in the comprehensive plan, and that South Chatham, West Chatham, the Cornfield, and Crow Road. And that is one of the main efforts that was discussed in the visioning study was what to do with these neighborhood centers. The comprehensive plan is quite clear in that it calls for a definition of the boundaries of these neighborhood centers and a definition of the zoning for these neighborhood centers that allows them to be pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use, part residential, part commercial areas that where there is a little bit greater density, you could say. And so the comprehensive plan in that regard also requires that what is done in those neighborhood centers should really ultimately be determined by the residents of those areas. So I just wanted to mention that both in the Cape Cod Commission's original visioning study, as well as the Planning Board's workshops that were done subsequent to that, very close attention was paid to this, to listen to the residents of each neighborhood center. So to continue with this little history, I'll try to make it somewhat brief. The Cape Cod Commission did come up with, I think, some 12 recommendations. Those were reviewed by the Planning Board, the HBDC, Board of Selectmen. There were several levels of review, and ultimately, some priorities were given to certain of those recommendations. Those priorities included the rewriting the zoning and determining the boundaries for the neighborhood centers and producing zoning that would allow for and encourage the type of development that is called for by the comprehensive plan in those areas. Subsequent to the 2013 and 2014 Cape Cod Commission study, the Planning Board, along with the Community Development Department, did further community outreach on these issues. There were a number of additional workshops held with the residents of each neighborhood center to gather more information and more input about what was desired in those areas by the residents of those neighborhood centers. I just want to mention at this point that our principal planner, Ally Sabatino, went through all of the material from the initial Cape Cod Commission Route 28 visioning study, as well as the work that was done subsequent to that by the Planning Board and the Community Development Department. And she's made a marvelous compendium and summary of all of that information and those reports. And that is available from the Community Development Department, if anyone would like that. I believe all the Planning Board members do have that summary information. So to go on to the next step, the Planning Board then took action on a number of those matters. At 2016 Annual Town Meeting, several amendments to the protective zoning bylaw were proposed that were the results of the Cape Cod Commission study recommendations. And these were the determination of the boundaries for the South Chatham Neighborhood Center, the zoning for the South Chatham Neighborhood Center, changing back what we call the in-between areas along Route 28, the in-between areas in between each neighborhood, all the neighborhood centers, reverting that to R-20 zoning. That was also called for in the comprehensive plan, and that was passed. All of these amendments were passed at Annual Town Meeting 2016, along with what was, what were essentially the first steps towards preparing the way to do the zoning for the other neighborhood centers in that the flexible overlay districts that were in place for West Chatham and, I believe, the Cornfield and Crow Road and North Chatham even, were removed. And that was really the first step that we wanted to take and that also the citizens of the Town wanted to take in order to create the new zoning. So after Annual Town Meeting 2016, what was next, the next step on the Planning Board's agenda in terms of implementing these recommendations was to begin to work on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and possibly the Cornfield. So what happened next is that in the interim, we spent a lot of time working on the accessory drilling unit bylaw in terms of our long-range planning activities. So the implementation of the Route 28 recommendations was postponed for a little while, but we've decided to pick up where we left off. And we began that effort again last year in 2019. And a lot of the planning, current Planning Board members were not on the Planning Board in 2014. So the first step was to begin to bring everybody up to date with the whole process and what had been done. And Ally and everyone has, have done a wonderful job with that. And then to begin to consider what we needed to do to draft the bylaw for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. In the interim, there was a workshop last December on form-based code, which was hosted by the Cape Cod Commission. And again, there was one in February. And Ally and a number of the Board members were able to attend either one of these workshops. And we discussed it at the level of the Planning Board, and I think everyone agreed that form-based code could provide a great tool and a very useful tool and a great solution in terms of creating the type of zoning that we're looking for in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and very likely in the other neighborhood centers as well. So I think that brings us pretty much up to date why we're having this meeting on form-based code. And as I understand it, the purpose of this meeting is really to introduce us to the And as I understand it, the purpose of this meeting is really to introduce us to the concept of Form-Based Code and to give the board members a chance to ask questions and to understand it thoroughly and then to look at how we can use that to create the zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and the other neighborhood centers and also define a process as we can go ahead. I do want to mention at this point, again, to compliment Ally on her work, that we were able to secure a grant to allow us to work with the Cape Cod Commission on this process. And this is a DLTA grant, a District Local Technical Assistant Grant. So we're very, very happy with the whole process and that we've gotten a grant to do this. So with that, I think, Ally, if you have any points to add, I'd welcome your points. But short of that, then I would turn the meeting over to Chloe Schaefer.
Catherine, I think this is Ally. I think you did a wonderful job doing the background.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So Chloe, if you'd like to begin and go ahead with your presentation?
Great. Thank you very much for having me this evening. Again, my name's Chloe Schaefer. I am the Chief Planner at the Cape Cod Commission, and I am joined by my colleagues, Sarah Corjeff, Martha Hevenner, and Elizabeth Kellum. And I'm going to share this presentation, so hopefully can see that now. So again, as was mentioned, this project is funded through the District Local Technical Assistance Program, and it's really building off a lot of efforts and other planning projects that have been done in the area. Quickly, I wanted to just give everybody an idea of the study area that we are talking about here. So these boundaries are not set. They do not necessarily reflect what final zoning boundaries are, but just, again, to give everyone an idea of the general area we're talking about here with Route twenty-eight coming down here, and this is George Rider Road there. So as was mentioned, a key aspect of this project is looking at the zoning in terms of Form-Based Codes. And the first part of what I'm going to go through tonight is really an introduction and overview of what Form-Based Codes are so that everyone kind of has that basic understanding. So last year, as part of a broader Cape Cod Commission project called the Community Resiliency by Design Project, we worked on developing a framework for Form-Based Codes on Cape Cod with a consultant union studio that we hired for the project. And this document really helps explain kind of what Form-Based Codes are, why communities might look to implement them or use them in their own towns, and kind of how they can be used to really foster development that is context-appropriate and reflects what the community is looking for. So I'm going to use this document as a basis for stepping through some information about what Form-Based Codes are and how they, how they get implemented. So first, the introduction. There are four general principles to Form-Based Codes. The first is that they're public, so they're really rooted in a thorough public engagement process that works to build consensus among the community in terms of what they're looking for in the area they're talking about with regards to the Form-Based Code. The second is they're very contextual, so they're calibrated to the local conditions. They really take into consideration what people like about their community, what they're looking for, and making sure that that becomes a really key part of the regulations that are developed. Third is they're positive, so they really are intended to articulate what a community wants to see in an area, what they're looking for. Sometimes there are kind of illustrations that can help provide examples of what they're looking for, a bit less so than focusing on simply what is not allowed or what is prohibited. And then fourth, as the name would suggest, there is an emphasis of form over function. They really focus on the built form, the built environment design, and especially kind of how that takes place in the public realm, that is, the area often between, excuse me, the right-of-way and a building facade, those places where the public is more inclined to interact with the development or with the building. And so in terms of kind of how they can compare to conventional zoning, while conventional zoning often is really driven by uses and separation of uses or determining what uses are available or are allowable in a certain area, and though there certainly are some dimensional requirements typically with conventional zoning, that plays a smaller role, whereas Form-Based Codes do include some regulation of uses. It's not that there is none of that, but that just plays a bit of a smaller role, and there is a larger emphasis and focus on the design and form of that built environment. So I just want to point out, there are many different approaches to implementing a Form-Based Code in a community, and it can take many different forms. The first, which is kind of the lightest approach or the most incremental, is to reform an existing zoning ordinance or bylaw. And so in this case, this might involve making some smaller tweaks to the community's existing zoning regulations, such as perhaps implementing a maximum setback in an area or changing parking regulations, perhaps it means allowing on-street parking in an appropriate area, that type of thing, but kind of smaller tweaks, but still operating within that existing zoning regulation. Then there's this middle ground of a partial Form-Based Code or hybrid approach, and this can take different forms. In some cases, it might mean that there are both form districts that articulate the buildings, massings and building forms where they sit on a site, et cetera. But there's also use districts as well, and so a parcel might be in both a use district and a form district to dictate both the uses allowed as well as the types of development. Another kind of middle ground approach is to do more of a full-fledged Form-Based Code, but only in a small kind of pilot area of a community, or to do it as an overlay in a smaller area of town. And then on the other end of the spectrum is a full Form-Based Code. This is where a community decides to overhaul all of their zoning regulations and go through the process of developing them all as a Form-Based Code. That is, of course, the most intensive and extensive. And in terms of looking at the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, where that will likely fall, just to give people an idea, is probably more towards the reforming the existing zoning ordinance or bylaw and kind of that middle ground area. So in terms of the implementation process for Form-Based Codes, there's kind of five key steps. The first is determining the scope. So what area are we looking at? What are the main objectives of that area? What are we trying to achieve with the changes? Second is to gather the data. So this is really important to understand what people are looking for, what they want to see in the area, what already exists perhaps that they really like and want to make sure that that gets complemented in any future regulations. And that all helps to really craft or refine the vision. Of course, there's already been a lot of visioning work done here for the area, but as we gather more data on what types of building forms or development people want to see in this area, that can help refine that. Then that all gets put into the code, so codifying the vision that is actually writing and drafting the code. And of course, that can be a very iterative process, go through many drafts. But then, once that is complete, then the last step, of course, is adopting and administering the new code. So there are some typical components of a Form-Based Code. Just to note, these are generally seen in those larger, full-fledged Form-Based Codes, but they can be also done in the smaller, excuse me, smaller aspects. And they include a regulating plan, public space standards, building form standards, and then some optional components that I'll highlight. So the first is a regulating plan, and what this probably seems most like to many of us is a zoning map. And in many ways, it is similar in that the regulating plan really outlines what regulations apply where for the code. And one of the interesting things about Form-Based Codes is that these regulating plans are often organized around one of these four organizing principles. The most common is that transect. And so in this case, every parcel in an area is assigned to a certain transect zone, and for each transect zone, there are then certain regulations that apply. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you. The next is a building or lot type based. And in that case, the focus is really on determining certain types of building types that are allowed in the area and creating regulations that would foster those, and then determining which building types are allowed on which parcels. And the third is street types. So here, the focus is on the streetscape and street design parameters, and less so on the design of the actual buildings. And it identifies different street types such as boulevards or main thoroughfares. And then the fourth, frontages, is kind of a combination of between the transect and street type, where there are certain regulations that apply based on the zone a parcel or site is in, but those zones are applied based on the streets. And so it depends on what streets an area is fronting on. Next are public space standards. This includes standards for thoroughfares, especially, this is typically more applicable for areas where there might be new streets being built or developed, not perhaps so much in those already developed areas, but again, many full Form-Based Codes then do articulate what the widths of travelings are or if there's parking on those, on various types of streets within the area. They also articulate some parameters for various civic spaces, whether those are plazas or pocket parks or that type of a thing. And then they also typically include building form standards. These include many different facets of a building, so for example, the placement, such as setbacks, where it goes on the lot, the form it takes. Is it, you know, two stories? What are those massings like typically? How tall are they? The frontages, so what's happening on those front planes of the buildings? Are there porches allowed? Is it more like a storefront, that type of a thing? In some places, they allow encroachments where parts of the building can go into a public right-of-way or area. They might outline certain actual building types. So this graphic here is showing an example of some building types. These are primarily residential, but such as a duplex or townhouse, a community may opt to identify those types of buildings that they'd like to see in an area. They talk about where the parking goes, and then again, what those compatible uses are for those buildings. And then some of the optional components that can be seen in Form-Based Codes. In places where they're building new streets, making new blocks, they might have block standards that identify the maximum length of a block or maximum perimeter to really ensure kind of more compact form that is walkable. Some places decide to include more architectural design standards that get into the, more the detail of those styles. Green building standards, for example, for energy efficiency. Some get into more detailed landscaping standards or deal with flood hazard areas, et cetera. And then, of course, some do work with historic preservation goals and, in areas where that's a key. So just some of the pros and cons of Form-Based Codes generally. Pros is that because it's really meant to be built off of this well-developed community vision, and the regulations stem straight from that, it can create that stronger connection between the regulations and what a community is looking to see in an area. By focusing more on creating or fostering appropriate forms and less so on mixes, the uses, it can help encourage more mixed-use development. And then, again, by focusing on the form and allowing for greater kind of design parameters around that, it can help to reinforce historic patterns in an area. Some of the cons, it can, of course, be time-consuming and costly, but as with any major zoning overhaul, I would say that can be the case. And of course, then, as a community changes what they want to see in an area or what their vision is, it would need to be recalibrated to make sure that it is fostering that type of development. But I would also say that regardless of whether it's a Form-Based Code or your more conventional zoning, I would hope a community does that anyways. So that's a very, very brief overview of Form-Based Codes and some of the considerations and components of it. So I'm happy to pause here and take any questions just kind of on Form-Based Code generally as a concept before moving on, or I'm happy to move on and we can deal with all questions later.
Okay. Chloe, this is Catherine. I'll just go through the board members and see if they have any questions for you now.
Sure.
So let's see, Tom Gagin, do you have any questions at this point for Chloe?
Yes, I do. Tom Gagin speaking. Chloe, could you please elaborate a little bit on the idea of the cons of it can be more costly? Can you give us more input on that parameter?
Sure. So I would start off by saying that this is especially applicable when a community is looking to really redo all their zoning as a Form-Based Code. But there are certain elements of Form-Based Codes that are often included, that aren't typically included in your more traditional zoning. And oftentimes, this results, the developed code will result in more illustrations to help provide kind of that visual guidance for people interpreting the code. There might be some learning that needs to be done by staff administering the code, where if they're already familiar with a more traditional zoning code, that could also be something that might add up. But I would say that, at least for the purposes of, those, I would say, come into play when you're talking about much larger zoning overhauls, and in the sense that they're often too, Form-Based Codes, you know, not everyone at the town planning level might have that expertise and might not be able to do it in-house, so there might be the need to hire a consultant, which could, of course, add to that cost.
Tom, are you all right?
I have a further clarification, if I may, Catherine. Tom Gagin.
Please go ahead.
Do you envision in terms of a cost either to the town or the developer, that the Form-Based Code would incur architectural planning, Architectural Board of Approval, something where there's uniform standards for the actual architecture of a building that's being rehabbed or built from new?
I think whether or not the town wanted to get into architectural standards in this particular area, or whether really the community felt that was necessary, would have to kind of be teased out as we go through this process of working to develop it. But I also, but I think it's more, the hope is to provide a code that I would say people can understand and interpret on their own. And I know you also have some other review processes in place. I'd also, I don't know if any of my colleagues want to jump in there, or Ally, if you have anything to add, please do so.
Hey, Chloe, this is Ally. I just wanted to say, Tom, we do, this section of town is in the Historic Business District. So the HBDC does review all the applications that come in as well. So I just wanted to kind of put your mind at ease on that section. So we still would, if the, you know, the Planning Board ends the public input, want to, we would still continue with HBDC review in this section. That overlay still is. That overlay still is, would still be there.
This is Catherine. Thank you, Ally. Tom, do you feel ready to move on, or do you have more questions?
Just one comment, please. Tom Gagin speaking. Thank you, Ally, for the explanation. I understand that. On a personal level, in terms of development, I've been in front of architectural review boards, and my personal input to that is it becomes, has become, particularly for some development I've done, it can become very costly. And the controls sometimes aren't in the best interest of future development. It's just a comment based on my experience. And other than that, I won't ask any more questions.
Okay. You're certainly free to, but I'll just, for, at this point, we'll go and ask the other board members if they have questions. Warren, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
This is Warren Chang. Yes, I do. Really, now that we have our grant and we are actually working with the Cape Cod Commission, a question for either Chloe or Ally, or maybe both. And that is, what would they envision would be the deliverable of this liaison between us? And how long might it take? Example, are we looking that someone is going to draft sort of a straw man form-based zoning bylaw completely for us to take a look at and agree, disagree, change, and so on? Or are we still really just sort of discussing things and with no form, with no strong sense of what deliverable we're going to end up with and how long that might take? You know, I've got some fairly, fairly strong feelings about what I think ought to be included in, in the bylaw for this neighborhood center. But I also have a strong sense that there's a great deal of positivity in form-based zoning, but I'm not sure in what the integration of that form-based zoning into our current bylaws looks like. And I'm hoping that the result will be a kind of a straw man draft of what a bylaw might look like that's form-based and integrating with our current bylaws. So I ask either Chloe or Ally what their thoughts are, just so I can understand what it is that we're trying to do here, and that'll frame my future questions. But that's the only question I have.
This is Catherine. Chloe or Ally, who would like to address Warren's question?
Chloe, do you want to start?
Yeah, I can start. Yeah, so as part of this project and the DLTA grant, we are looking to develop a draft zoning bylaw for this West Chatham area. It would be an initial draft, and it would likely, again, include some of these form-based elements. Probably wouldn't be, you know, full-fledged form-based code, but would be, again, working more in that middle ground area of the different types of approaches. And the intent is to get that, get a draft of that done by the end of this year. I know, of course, I think the pandemic obviously interrupted things a little bit, but that is what we're working towards still. Ally, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Yeah, and I think that we really just wanted to go through form-based code, this presentation that Chloe gave. We just really wanted the board to, I know some of you have heard it in the past, but we just really wanted to refresh the board's memory about what kind of things form-based code could potentially do in this West Chatham area. And like Chloe was saying, it doesn't have to be strictly form-based code. There can be some in-between. It really depends on what the community wants to see, the West Chatham Neighborhood Center wants to see, and then obviously the planning board as well. Based upon that community input and public feedback we want to see in this area. And we'll go through later on in the presentation kind of the next steps. But I think it is good to frame kind of the board's mindset about what the path is going forward. And the ultimate goal would be to gain public input to create a zoning bylaw for this West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
Great. This is Catherine. Thank you, Ally and Chloe. And I just wanted to add, in my discussions with Ally this afternoon, and what, to reiterate, Chloe has said that by the end of the year, we would have that draft. That is the, the schedule as we see it. And that does mean that if we move ahead according to schedule, that we could also see bringing the draft of the proposed bylaw amendment to annual town meeting 2021. All right. So Warren, did you have any more questions, or should I move on to Bob Wertschfter?
I guess the only question I'd have is, at what point in this process moving forward to the end of the year, does the board have the opportunity to mention, discuss, propose, whatever, specific elements to incorporate in the draft? Or will we have no input until we have a draft on which to comment?
This is Catherine. I'll make one response, and then if Chloe and Ally also, if you'd like to join in. So they, Warren, Chloe and Ally have mentioned that we will be getting a lot of community input. And this is a similar process that was followed with the initial Route 28 Cape Cod Commission Visioning Study, and also the subsequent workshops and so on that were done by the planning board. And I think the first step is to get further community input. And in particular, in this case, the comprehensive plan clearly calls for the residents of each neighborhood center to determine the zoning of that neighborhood center. So I think we will be listening very closely to the requests of the residents of West Chatham as well as the whole community. We have already received a lot of community input. And again, I think Ally has shared that. The Cape Cod Commission has all of that, and anything done subsequent to that initial Route 28 study, Ally has shared that with Chloe and Sarah and everyone. So we might want to look at community input first. And then as a board, of course, along with Ally and Cape Cod Commission and Katie, we'll be reviewing that and also putting in tweaks or revisions from our side. But the first step may be the community input. Chloe or Ally, did you want to add to that? Comment?
No, so I agree with you. I think Catherine, this is Ally, the first step is to, you know, get more public input, get it out there. Here are the comments from the community and the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And then the planning board can review all those inputs, input that we received, and then make decisions based upon those input. And obviously, your own professional experience as well. And that's normally, in my mind, how we usually, you know, review and create bylaws. But Chloe, I don't know if you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I think that was, that was a good summary.
Great. Great. Thank you. Warren, this is Catherine. Did you have any more questions or comments?
No, other comments.
At this point? Thank you, Warren. So let's ask Bob Wertschfter for questions for Chloe, or any comments at this point?
Yeah, this is Bob Wertschfter. I don't really have any questions. I'd like to see a little bit more detail about what the form of a form-based code looks like. I'm not very sure how it, you know, how it's presented and how we put it together. So at this point, I don't really feel like I should comment or help in the process.
Chloe, did you have an initial response to Bob's request, or is that something that we'll see more as we go along?
Sure. I would offer that I'll be sure to send along the link to the framework for form-based codes, which I know I went through it very quickly, but in case you all don't have that already, I think many of you might, but just in case. And that also has some examples of some form-based codes that do exist already in various places. But also, as we go through this process, if people have more questions, certainly happy to answer them as we go through it.
Okay. This is Catherine. Thank you, Chloe. So Bob Dubus, do you have questions or comments at this point?
Bob Dubus says, no questions or comments, other than I'm enjoying it and let's get on with it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bob. And again, Roger, do you have any questions for Chloe at this point?
No, at this point, no, I'm good. At this point.
Okay, thank you. And this is Catherine, and I actually don't have any questions for you, Chloe. So if you'd like to proceed with the next aspect of your presentation, that would be great.
Great. So next, I'm just very briefly going to talk about some of the key elements that really impact the character or design of an area, because these are things that we anticipate really playing a significant role in the coming months in development of this new zoning that we're looking at for the area. So the first is building placement. This really gets at those setbacks where buildings are located on lots, how far they are from the street, how far they are from each other. Next is scale, so understanding how big allowable buildings should be in terms of what the community wants. So that includes the height of buildings. It also looks at stuff like the width of buildings, the width of the facades that are allowed. Next is style, so looking at things like what types of materials are preferred on buildings in the area, what types of roofs, are they flat? Are they gables? Are both okay? Are there certain building elements that would be appropriate, such as dormers or porches in the area? Parking location, of course, has a large impact on character and where that goes. I think so far in much of the previous planning efforts in this, for this area, it seems like people have tended to be okay with locating parking more to the side or rear of buildings. Something to think about. Landscaping, where that goes. Does it go in the front yard? Is there something else? But yeah, looking at that, of course, and how much of it can impact the character of an area. And then, of course, while we will be focusing a lot on form, uses still are important. And so understanding what uses people will want to see in an area, which does impact the operations of buildings there. So that's it for me for now. I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ally to kind of go through how we're looking at proceeding with the project, unless there's anything else I can answer at this moment.
This is Catherine. I'll go through the board again to see if we have additional questions. Tom, did you have questions again at this point?
Catherine, Tom Gagin, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Warren, do you have any additional questions or comments at this point?
This is Warren Chang. No, no comments.
And Bob Wertschfter?
No comments.
And Bob Dubus?
No questions, Bob Dubus.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, no questions.
And Catherine, I don't have any questions, Chloe, at this point. I would say, though, what you've just presented, the key elements, really clarifies a lot, just knowing those key elements. So please go ahead with the next step. If that would be Ally to begin, that would be great.
Yes. Catherine, this is Ally. I am going to go, I'm going to share my screen, oop, share my screen very quickly. Just give me one second. Can everyone see my screen? It's black right now. There we go.
This is Catherine. I can see your black screen, yes. Now I see draft survey questions.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm just going to go through some of the draft survey questions that we have prepared. This is the kind of the next step going forward in what we're hoping to accomplish, which was to really get out to the public, figure out what they really want to see in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So we figured a draft survey would probably be the best way to go about it, because there is both, you know, pictures of what we're, what we're hoping, you know, people can give us feedback on, which we think is very helpful, especially for this kind of form-based code bylaw that we're hoping for. So just based upon what Chloe said before, the first question is, do you support the following building forms in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? So single building with simple massing, single buildings with varied smaller massings, cluster of buildings, primary buildings without buildings, primary building without buildings, frontage building screening with buildings behind. And again, these next slides explain it in pictures, which I think is so much easier. So single building with simple massing. So if you can see, here's the single building up front, and these are just some examples of ones that are, these are around town. Single buildings with varied smaller massings. So again, this is the example here, and you can see the highlighted sections, which is the varied smaller massings. A cluster of buildings, so that's exactly as it sounds, just a few buildings on a parcel. And here are some examples as well. Primary building without buildings. As you can see, here's an example, there's an outbuilding, and you might not be able to see that one. There we go. And then this building here with the outbuilding behind. Frontage buildings, screening buildings behind. So this would be the building in front, here's the road, and then the building behind. And again, here are some examples of that. Okay. So front setbacks. What distance between buildings and the sidewalks do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? So buildings very close to the sidewalk, so within 10 feet, buildings moderately close to the sidewalk, 10 feet to 20 feet, buildings relatively set back from the sidewalk, 21 feet to 35 feet. And again, here's more examples of those. So buildings very close to the sidewalk, as you can see, those are some examples. Buildings moderately close to the sidewalk, so again, that's 10 to 20 feet. And here are some examples. Buildings relatively set back from the sidewalk, so 21 to 35 feet. And then what distance between buildings do you support in the West Chatham area? Buildings very close to each other, buildings moderately close to each other, buildings far away from each other. So this would be an example of buildings very close to each other, buildings moderately close to each other, buildings far away from each other. So this is just hoping to get what people really envision in these location, in this location. So what building heights do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? And obviously, not to exceed 30 feet, those are, that's in our bylaw, that's a requirement. So one story, 1.5 stories, two stories, 2.5 stories. So this is an example of a one-story building, 1.5, two stories, and then 2.5 stories. What width of buildings along the street do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area? So the main facade up to 25, main facade 25 to 50 feet, main facade 50 to 75, and then over 75. So this again is examples of up to 25 feet, 25 to 50. Again, we're highlighting this section here. The same with the building down here. 51 to 75. Again, this section here and here, over 75. 51 to 75, again, this section here, and here, over 75, this section here. What roof forms do you support in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? Gable or hip roof, so steeply pitched, gable or hip roof, shallow pitched, or a flat roof. And again, here are some examples, this is the gable or hip roof, steeply pitched, shallow pitched, or a flat roof. What are other building features that are desirable in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area? Porches, dormers, bay windows, display windows, couplés. And again, these are examples of the porches, dormers, bay windows, display windows, couplés. What building materials are desirable in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center area? So shingles, clapboard, brick. And again, here are some examples, shingles, clapboard, brick. What should be allowed between the buildings on the streets in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? Landscape plantings, stone walls and low fences, pedestrian pathways, outdoor patios and dining spaces, informal seating areas. So again, these are the landscape plantings as examples. Stone walls and low fences, you can see here and here, pedestrian pathways, outdoor patios and dining spaces, informal seating areas. So what should be allowed between the buildings in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? Again, landscape plantings, stone walls and low fences, pedestrian pathways, outdoor patios and dining spaces, informal seating areas. And again, these are just some more examples, pedestrian pathways, outdoor patios and dining spaces. Again, these are between the buildings, informal seating areas. And then uses, I know we obviously, in the past, the Planning Board has worked a lot with what potential uses could be allowed in this West Chatham Neighborhood Center, but we really just want to affirm that that is still the case. So we put examples, so mixed use, commercial and residential, including apartments and duplexes, neighborhood scale, multifamily residential, small retail, NBNB, restaurant, home occupation, professional office, bank, or other, please describe. So we really want to get more feedback to just either affirm what has been done in the past, or if other, if people have, you know, new ideas or different ideas, we really just want to hear that as well. But we obviously do realize that a lot have worked, of work has been done on the uses in this area. So next steps, we're hoping to potentially put out, if the Planning Board agrees, this survey within the next few weeks, to really get public input. We're hoping to get the residents of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, we really want to hear, you know, what they think, obviously, about this, because it is in the comprehensive plan, as the Chair stated before. And then we're hoping to do some input, at least one input, community input and engagement session with the community, just so we can really, you know, engage with them and hear their thoughts and opinions on it. Because, as you know, and as we've done in the past, we really want this to be a public-driven zoning bylaw. And so that's really it for me. But if you have any questions, obviously, both Chloe and I, and other staff from the Cape Cod Commission is here as well.
Okay, this is Catherine, thank you Ally. I would just like to make a comment, I think that survey was just put together quite brilliantly, so I want to thank all of you for doing that. And I think it's excellent, it was done with excellence, and it'll be very effective. Again, I would just suggest, do you have an idea how you'll be putting out the survey? If you could explain that to us?
I'm not sure, Chloe, you might be the best presenter.
Sure, so what we'll be looking to do is to set this up in an online survey platform, so then it would be able to be shared just with a, with a web link. But if there is another format that you'd like to see, or that you think would be useful, I'm certainly happy to hear about that as well.
This is Catherine, no, I think that would be great. One, again, I'm, I just want to emphasize this point, because the comprehensive plan does call for it. If we do an online survey, could we add a box or something that people check off whether they are a Chatham resident, or whether they are a West Chatham resident? Just so that we know, that we can distinguish those responses. I think that is something that we need to do. But other than that, I thought the survey is really very well put together. So let me ask Tom Gagin, did you have any questions for Ally or Chloe about the survey or about our process going forward?
Catherine, Tom Gagin, I do not.
Thank you. And Warren Chang, questions or comments about the survey or the process going forward?
This is Warren Chang. For Ally, I think what you have there is wonderful for the survey. I do have a question, however. Given that the comprehensive plan and other, and other sources of information have made it clear that the town has already set goals to increase the availability of multifamily housing, and presumably to, in the neighborhood centers, increase density. But there's nothing in the survey which gets feedback to confirm or to challenge what has previously been presented to the town and already approved with respect to those issues, multifamily housing and, and density.
I think that if the board agrees, we could add a question in there, to see how people would feel about that. We could target it specifically towards residential housing and multifamily housing. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, yes, I mean, the basic premise, I think, of the neighborhood centers has always included, if nothing else, that there be mixed use, and multifamily or increased density of housing, with the idea of addressing affordable housing or more reasonable housing. And so I would think those elements would need to be in a proposed zoning bylaw for the neighborhood centers, be it form-based or otherwise. And I would hope that the form-based element would make a mixed-use, higher-density environment much more attractive than it might otherwise be under the current bylaws. But the idea of validating what has already been approved by the town, based on the time that it's gone by, and people may have, may have changed their mind about what they wish to have in their backyard, I think is highly necessary in terms of the survey, that's all.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, this is Chloe, if I could just...
Yes, please go ahead.
Just to your point that, I did want to highlight that, in the use question at the end of the survey, it does call out a neighborhood scale, multifamily residential, as its own use to ask if people do want to see that in that area. So I don't know if that kind of helps get at what you were asking about, but I just wanted to flag that.
This is Catherine, thank you Chloe, and thank you Ally. So let's move to Bob Wurzhafter, do you have questions or comments about the survey or the process going forward?
Yeah, this is Bob Wurzhafter. First of all, I'll carry on with the point Warren made, that we decided in our planning that these zones would not include single-family. Are we not asking, are we just assuming that that's going to carry through and not asking whether people think single-family is appropriate there?
Ally or Chloe, if you'd like to respond?
Sure, I mean, we can of course put, you know, a question in there, we can add that as a use. I'd have to look back at what was said, you know, and discussed originally at the input sessions, I think in 2014, to see if that was. But if we want to reaffirm, I think that that's more than appropriate to ask.
Well, if my recollection of the, when we asked the people of West Chatham, they did not want multifamily, and they in fact wanted single-family. And we, as a, as a Planning Board, decided to be actually not consistent with what the town selectmen had said about wanting to increase housing. And we, as a, a board, decided that if we're making town centers, that single-family housing is not appropriate. But that was only a decision made by us, and has, you know, it's not, not a selectman decision or a voted in town meeting. So I'm just, I think, I think getting back to where Warren's going, I think we should be more, we should just have a more open question about what kinds of densities are people comfortable with in, in these centers. And I, there could be a question, single-family allowed or not allowed, multifamily allowed or not allowed? And I don't know why 4,000 square feet is, is a magical number either, in terms of how big multifamily can be. If we're trying to do some increases in, in multifamily, 4,000 square feet is not a very big multifamily property. Now whether we put three or four of those small buildings on a, on a lot, or, or in an area, is, is unclear from, from the way you've asked those questions.
This is Catherine, Ally or Chloe, did you want to respond to that? Or we could just, maybe we could take a look at those questions? And what I hear you saying, Bob, and I would agree with this approach, is that the board made some determinations, but in a sense with this survey, and we've also done a lot of public outreach before, in 2014 and 2015, but in a sense with this survey, we're kind of just opening up the question again, and just asking the question again. And of course, I'm proposing that we distinguish Chatham residents' responses and West Chatham residents' responses, and then seeing what the public input is again. Is that what you're suggesting, Bob, that we just, in a sense, open it up again?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know how, how much weight we're actually going to put in this survey, it's just, it's just another piece of information. Not sure even how, how relevant it is in, in the long run, because of who, who actually responds to this. I think there'll be some fairly fashion bias in the responses of, of people who are going to get into this. So I would not think that in any way it is, it is, you know, mandatory that we follow any of this stuff, it's just for information. So in that sense, I agree with you Catherine, it should be as informative as possible, and that means ask, ask these broad questions about density.
This is Catherine, yes Ally, go ahead.
I do believe that Martha from the Cape Cod Commission, she has her hand raised.
Okay, sorry, I can't see raised hands. So Martha, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, I, I chose that a high-tech feature to raise my hand. This is Martha Givener, and I, I was involved with the Route 28 Visioning back in 2013, 2014 project. And I just wonder if, if you're interested in building on some of the, I would say, outcomes or input that we got in that project, relative to what sorts of uses people wanted to see in, in that area. The question was asked about single-family, multifamily, et cetera, and I believe that the, the public input that we got at the time made it fairly clear that multifamily was, multifamily and mixed use were, were, were desired, and not single-family. I believe at the time, it was thought that a single-family development might not be appropriate in a village center area, but would be more appropriate, you know, in the R-20 and in other areas. So I think Ally referenced looking back at what, what you heard, or what we heard back then, and it's not that you're, that you are wedded to it, but I just wonder if it might be good to build on that, that earlier input.
This is Catherine, Martha, I just want to comment that, yes, very, very much so, I think we want to build on that earlier input and listen to it, and still keep it very strongly in play. I, I think, as Ally said, this survey is to, in a sense, confirm or reconfirm the input that we've heard before, because that was, after all, six years ago now. So we just want to reconfirm that, and I think that is a good purpose for this survey. I do remember, what you remember, that the multifamily mixed use was the response that was favored, and single-family was not favored for the, the neighborhood centers. So if we understand the survey as, in a sense, as a confirmation of what we've done before, I think that would be great. And also, if I could just make the comment that might be addressing some, some of Bob Wurzhafter's concerns, that the other thing is that between 2014 and now, although it was happening at 2014, but it's become very, very clear that there is a housing crisis on Cape Cod and in Chatham, that's something that's become very, very clear in that interim. We've taken the action for the accessory dwelling unit bylaw amendment because of that housing shortage. So I think in that light, the Planning Board may feel that we do want to be sure that we allow for multifamily housing and greater density in the neighborhood centers to respond to the current situation. So I just wanted to make that comment. Does any, does anyone else have their hand raised that I can't see?
No Catherine, that was it. Although Warren seems to be waving.
Warren, did you have something to say? Please go ahead.
Well, in the spirit of everything that has been said, I, I guess I would strongly suggest that any survey that is sent out would have sort of a preamble attached to it, which basically would indicate to the respondents what has already gone before. We have a comprehensive plan, we have had, over these years, input from the public, and which has concluded that multi-use, multifamily, higher density are, are critical for the town, and are appropriate to include in the zoning for the neighborhood centers. And, all right, so that's, that should be presented as, you know, water under the bridge, we've already looked at that collectively with all the public input. So now the question is, with that as a given, what about the questions that Ally has put out there, given that this is our objective? What about setbacks? What about, what about form? What about, you know, these things? But not just open it up so that anybody who doesn't, you know, wants to have single-family homes, well, you know, that, that, that bridge has been crossed. The town has publicly said that's not what the neighborhood centers are all about. So I do think that it's important, unless we're just going to get random responses from people, that are not going to be helpful in terms of what specifics we come up with, that we have a preamble which doesn't need to be terribly long, but which sets the stage saying, what has come before has, has given us these visions, these objectives, these goals, to incorporate into bylaw changes for the neighborhood centers, the following, and then you say what they are, but they certainly are going to include no single-family homes, multi-use, multifamily, higher density, so on. So I think that's important to try and point the super tanker in the right direction, if you're going to be asking for people to then respond to Ally's questions. That's enough said.
Okay, this is Catherine, thank you Warren. I would agree with that, that we may want to put this in context of what's already, because so much work has already been done in terms of community because so much work has already been done in terms of community outreach as well as sifting through the responses from the community by the planning board and members of the Cape Cod Commission, including certain design standards. We did sift through those and we came up, the planning board actually voted on certain setbacks and so on for the neighborhood centers. I think Sarah, you helped us with that. So it might be good to, to present what's already been sifted through and then in that context, present these additional questions to confirm. And also I think some of the questions are refinements, uh, definitely the building forms and so on. Those are definitely refinements that were not so explicitly covered before, but that might be a good approach. And I'm just wondering also, um, if the process might be that we have a community meeting that is a general informational meeting about form-based code and that we want to explore using this, uh, as one of our tools to create the zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and first have an informational meeting like we're having now for the planning board for the community and particularly for West Chatham residents, and then after that, send out the survey. Because I, I think if I could say so, there will even be the question in people's mind, why should we use this for our West Chatham zoning? If people don't know what it is, um, that's the first step is to present that to them. So anyway, that's just a comment from me and, uh, I should move on to the rest of the board, uh, but I think we're at Bob Dubis, if you have a question or comment.
Catherine, I was not-
Bob Dubis. No, I don't have any, uh, comments or questions right at the moment. I think that, uh, the presentation was pretty good on the last section here.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Bob Wordshafter, did you have further comments?
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to, I, I think your suggestion of, of, um, waiting a little bit and doing this in a little more informed, uh, and, and Warren's point about being more informed about what we're asking for would make a lot of sense. Let's say the planning board is, has said this, you agree or disagree would be better than just asking open, you know, a question about, uh, setback, for instance. I, I do, I still, and I, I do think, um, the question of, of multi-family does need to get refined a, a little bit more. Uh, I'm not sure that we should just be asking about multi-family 4,000 square feet. I do think we need to ask about, uh, would, would people be willing to have larger properties, a larger, a building of, of multi-family? But, but part of my concern with the way the survey is now is that, uh, while the, the pictures are adding some information, I find them to be extremely biased in some sense. I mean, when you look at the size of the buildings and you, you choose these really nice houses and then for 75 feet, you choose the CBS, which isn't particularly nice looking at all. I, I think those are kind of, uh, additions that don't add to, uh, the reality, you know, get, getting real, uh, responses from people. So I, I, I would like to suggest that we work on this a little bit more than, instead of just rushing it out now.
This is Catherine, thank you, Bob. So that I, I would just comment that, that might be a worthwhile, um, action to take that we, and that we send it out in the context of what's already been done, possibly even to present, as I think Warren was suggesting, that this is to put together the input that we've had before from the community, which is part of what the planning board has already been doing, and present that, that we're including multi-family housing. These are the setbacks that we've considered and design standards that we've considered. These are the uses that have come out of the workshop, uh, but now we're considering doing this with form-based code and we want to again, get some community input, but put it in the context of what's already been put together. I think that might be a good idea as well. So I haven't asked Roger if you have questions or comments on the survey and the process. Roger, I think you're on mute. There you go. I think you're muted again, Roger.
What about now?
That, I can hear you now, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. No, the only thing I thought is maybe on the survey, maybe, uh, sometimes people maybe identify business owners because sometimes a business owner views all these things different than a resident. At least it gives you an idea of who's answering the, the survey.
Good, no, that's a good point. All right.
I'm fine.
All right. And I should ask, are there any other comments or questions from members of the public or Peter Kokolos or anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, Peter, did you, yes.
Yeah, you put me on the list, please.
Yes, Peter, did you, did you want to, did you have questions or comments? Please go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you. The first comment I'll make is, is as, is, is in my current position, you know, as a selectman. Uh, just to reinforce what was said before, the, uh, the Board of Selectmen as for the last year, year and a half, two times made a primary, one of our major goals is affordable and attainable housing. And we spent, uh, one of our last meetings in, uh, Community Development could talk to this somewhat, on, uh, you know, uh, pursuing that and going farther, we're looking for places to do it and so forth. I won't go through the details, but, um, I, just so you know that that is a, a primary goal and we voted on it a, a couple of times and it's been out there quite a bit. Now I'll speak as a, not as a selectman, but as a, as a former, uh, planning board member and, and a citizen. Um, I, I like the, the, the way, the way this comes out, but I'm going to make a comment. It'll be kind of, it's kind of, uh, it'll fake come across negative, but it always bothered me when I first saw, we're going to do form, oh, form, we'll do form over function, but it's not form over function, it's a priority given to form and I get that. Uh, my, you know, I, I'm a technical guy. Form follows function. You got to make sure your functions are good. In an area like this for planning, uh, this is a better approach and I, and I'm not saying no. I think that you have to, in my opinion, you know, you step back and you look at what we're doing, your, your, um, when you're going out with question 11 on that format, I think that ought to be first because what's, it seems to me that the function of a, and it's been said here.
Peter, this is Catherine, you're cutting out a lot. Peter, this is Catherine, you're cutting out a lot. Maybe, that's a little better. Maybe keep the micro, microphone closer to your mouth.
Yeah, I'm on an iPad.
Okay, that's what's doing it.
Let me, let me try keeping my hands down and sitting on them and maybe that'll help. Can you hear me okay now?
That's really good, yes.
Did I, did I, did you, did I lose you? It was, I wanted to go back to, to, to the question 11. I think that ought to be upfront and I think by putting, I agree that, that, uh, you put a, you put the, uh, you put it, put everything that you're sending out in, in context. The, uh, it's pretty clear in, in the, relatively clear, it's in the, uh, uh, long-range plan, what, um, what is in a neighborhood center, what should be there. Uh, you know, and, and there was a lot of work that was done in that, especially by the, by the Cape Cod Commission. So I think you, you start with the point of what a neighborhood center is, which you, you spell out, uh, and then you can ask the specific questions. Uh, and I agree with what was, what Warren said and, and where Bob is coming from and, uh, and, and, and how you proceed. I, I think it would be worthwhile to do a public, uh, engagement on this ahead of time, explaining what it is and then going through it. It's tough to do that in a COVID environment, although Board of Selectmen did two of them and one had to do with how do, how does Chatham look at, um, how does Chatham look at getting back into business? And we had 400 people on a, on a Zoom meeting. So I think that's, you might want to try and do that or think about it, I, um, you know, and then go out with your survey. The other thing I, I make a comment, I, I, it's, it is, it is right that in the, correct, that, that the, uh, long-range plan indicates the neighborhood, uh, the public and the neighborhood folks, and I don't know if the word is determined, what's going to be there. Cause I remember being, you know, uh, questioned or, uh, counseled, uh, by a couple of people that said, mentioned that yes, it says they have a major input, but remember that you're taking this to town meeting and Ch- West Chatham is important to the people that live there, but it's also important to the town. So if you're going to change anything, two-thirds of a vote are required. So it, I don't, I don't believe it says determined and, and so I'd be careful how I use that. Uh, and I may be wrong, I'm not sure. I usually, I used to have it with me and I just don't have it now. But I, I, I think what you've done is great and I think you, you could, the way you're proceeding is, is, is super. I just, um, if, if I would just, I think about how you're going to get public input, understand that you will get, uh, you know, certain, a number of folks are going to answer it and a lot of, a number of people won't until you have a product. And then you're going to, and then as we've seen before, we're going to go through a whole process and that's good. But ultimately, the proposal is done by the, by the planning board with a lot of public input, but you know, who gets held accountable? And that's you guys. So, so you have to put your best, best thought into it for the best interest of Chatham. And I hope, I hope that you, you could hear that okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, this is Catherine. So, so I'm just thinking that what we might want to consider, I'm just throwing some ideas out there. I think this idea of doing a public forum first before we do the survey, uh, and doing that in the context of and on the basis of all the work that's been done before, a pub, a public forum on Zoom, uh, about form-based code and using form-based code, uh, for, to create or to help create the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. I think that might be a good first step before the survey goes out. I'd also like to ask the board to consider the idea of creating, sometimes it, I, I agree with Peter that often it's, it's better, it's easier to get a clear response if you present, uh, something that's already put together, uh, rather than just asking questions in the open, just say, this is what we're proposing, give us your response. So that might be another way of doing it, that we have an initial meeting with the community so that they understand that we are wanting to use form-based code to create West Chatham zoning. And then we come up with at least a very, you know, tentative first draft of what that'll be and then we send that out, uh, for public response. That's another approach. So, um, maybe, yes. Who is it?
Like Maverick and I, I'd like, like to say something sometime, but I don't want to interrupt you.
No, that's all right. May I ask your name, please?
Yeah, I'm Philip Richardson. I'm a summer resident, uh, but I, I live in California and I've, I've been in the real estate business 50 years, so I've gone to a lot of these meetings. So I just had a few comments, uh-
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Richardson.
Yeah. The one thing is whatever you do, you don't want to discourage development because West Chatham, I don't think there's a new building in West Chatham for a long time. So if you want something new, you've got, then the trouble I think with form-based code, it gets very restrictive and then the poor architect says, what, why do I have to follow these rules? Cause I'm an architect and I'm creative and I want to do my own, uh, design. So I'm not sure that what you, the way you handle things now is that much more, is detrimental compared to the form-based code approach. Um, and then somebody was talking about single-family, well, you can do single-family density. I built, um, single-family homes in San Francisco at 76 units an acre. And they're three stories and they're two and, one and two bedrooms with a loft. Anyway, so density, a single-family residential does not have to mean, uh, uh, low density. Um, and I, I'm just worried that if West Chatham doesn't, the area you have defined for West Chatham doesn't give much chance to add new because what is shown as West Chatham is pretty much developed. So if you, you want new development, there's the front of a job lot, but there isn't much vacant land that you are discussing and therefore maybe this gets to be somewhat an academic exercise because the existing buildings probably aren't going to go away. Um, I guess, and the one other thing that the housing thing has become more, so talking 19, 19, yeah, 2014 thoughts about planning, uh, things have changed lately, especially in the housing area and, uh, I think a new, if you do a new survey as you're talking about, which is a great idea, I think you should, you should try to concentrate on, at least on the housing as to the need for housing. Um, so I think that's, that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you. And it's Mr. Richardson?
Yes, yes. Philip Richardson, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. This is Catherine. Uh, I just wanted to comment on one of the points you mentioned. It's true, most of Chatham actually, not only West Chatham, but most of Chatham, you could say is built out. Uh, that being said, we still want to think in perpetuity and we want to have protective zoning bylaws that guide any development or redevelopment in the direction that preserves the beauty and the livability and the historic, um, the historic authenticity of the town of Chatham. So we're still looking to revise our zoning bylaws to allow for, that will allow and encourage redevelopment, um, that is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So understood that there's not really a lot of space for new development, but eventually there's redevelopment and we want to consider that too. We're thinking long-term, you know, 20, 50, 100 years from now, 200 years from now.
Well, I have an 1820 house that, that we re, re, re redesigned or rebuilt, so that's, uh, that's 200 years old, so. No, I agree, right? But West Chatham is not as attractive as downtown Chatham.
Right.
Architecture. That'd be hard to not, not agree, yeah, to disagree with, yeah. And when, and when we did new stores like the CBS and the Chatham, um, market, there was a lot of effort put into getting a good architectural result, which is what occurred. And so, uh, I think under the existing system, the things have been very well executed.
Good. Good, thank you, Mr. Richardson. So I'd like to, we will have more opportunity for public comment, but I'd like to go back to the board because I think we're dealing with the issue of what exactly should our process be at this point? Catherine, yes, Ally.
You can finish your thought, but I just wanted to jump in there whenever you're done with it.
Uh, no, I just, that's where my sense is, is that we're considering what the process should be. Should we have another meeting, at least one other meeting first before the survey goes out? And number, point number two, should we, um, uh, generate sort of a structure that this is what we're thinking and get a response to that structure before we send out, uh, the survey? But Ally, what did you want to say?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make a comment on kind of the process going forward. We did have a few discussions internally about it, um, and we thought that, you know, putting the survey out there, and I think it's a really great idea to have some of the context upfront in the survey, but I thought that putting the survey out there, we could really get some public input. And we also discussed really going to the West Chatham neighborhood like personally. going into the stores and things like that and asking for them to complete the survey. So to really go out there and, you know, boots on the ground.
Yeah.
And so by doing the survey, we thought that that could really give us some good input where we could have a basis to go and, and do that first public input meeting, public engagement meeting. We thought that that would give us a good basis to start for some ideas to go forward, to really bring it then to the people, to give the citizens more of a place, a good place to start, I would say. And I don't know Chloe, if you had any more thoughts on that? But I think that that's kind of what we were thinking. We really wanted to have a baseline before we went and had a public input session.
Okay, this is Catherine. Chloe, did you have comments on that as well?
I think Ally summed it up pretty well. So I would just reiterate, I think we can certainly still refine the survey. And I can talk to Ally about how to proceed with that. But that it would be, while again, there's been so much work done here. But kind of whether that's reaffirming some of that work as well as diving into more of those form questions that I think still need to be looked at a bit. And getting some at least initial feedback from the community on that would, would, it'd be great to have that to go forward with, to get a reaction to. As opposed to, you know, starting, starting just kind of really open-ended, I would say.
Okay. This is Catherine, thank you, Chloe. I'll just remind the board and everyone that before we took the trajectory that we want to consider using form-based code to put together the zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, the board was at the point of drafting the bylaw. We, we were just, we were simply using all of the community and input that we had from 2014, 2015, and we were already working on the draft. And then the idea of integrating some use of form-based code came up. So I'm just saying that because I think at that point, we felt we had enough community input to actually draft the bylaw and then put the draft out for public response. So now I just want to clarify with Ally and Chloe, because I've heard two things. I've heard one, taking the survey personally to the West Chatham neighborhood residents and businesses. Or, and/or two, putting it online. So were you thinking to do both these things or?
Both, Catherine.
Both, okay, great. So I think what I'd like to do now is just again, go through the board and see what everyone's opinion is about how to proceed. Should we go ahead with the survey with some amendments, using both approaches, both personally to the West Chatham residents and businesses and online? Should we go ahead with that as a first step with some amendments? Or should we have at least a public forum meeting first and then go ahead with the survey? So Tom Gagan, could I ask you that?
Catherine, Tom Gagan. One of the areas that the board started to touch on in our prior conversations about the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, Village Center, my memory, excuse me correctly, was incentives for development, particularly around the issues of density. So when we put questions out, or we survey the town in general, and specifically the West Chatham area, are we going to ask the public about incentives? One of the issues that, which is paramount to certainly the board's selectmen in the town in general, is how to incentivize development of housing. Whether it be single family in this area is questionable. But we have been told that there are ways in which the density can change and certainly incentivize the fact that different densities for multifamily homes in these village centers should be encouraged. So my question, I guess, of all the board members and certainly Ally would be, should we begin to talk about publicly, in question publicly, the idea of incentives for housing stock in this area?
Okay, this is Catherine. I think that's a good point. But if I could get your input on the process, because we do want to determine how to, how to go forward. So would you be in favor of sending the survey out initially? Or having at least one public forum meeting prior to a survey about form-based code? In the context of all the work that's already been done on West Chatham?
The latter first, before we send out a survey, I think we should remind ourselves and the community about where the board is at this point in time to elicit questions from them that could be included in any survey. Again, I kind of beat the steadfast of mine is that maybe within that survey, we could suggest that we should incentivize the density in this particular area and get feedback on that. But I think we need to get with the public and get their input before we put a survey out. That's my feeling.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And then, let's see, Warren, could I have your comments on the process going forward?
Yeah, this is Warren Chang. I think that whether you have a meeting first or the survey goes out, I think it's, it's really very important that this preamble that I mentioned earlier be created, which basically outlines what has already been developed over the years and approved at town council or town meeting with respect to the characteristics of the town center. Because our, our job going forward isn't to start with a clean slate. We have been mandated to do certain things, including incentivizing increased density. But also to make it attractive. And unless there is guidance presented for a meeting or for the survey, we, we run the risk of getting responses which just go off in tangents that have nothing to do with what the mandate that we've been given really is. I, I personally would just like the idea of having the Cape Cod Commission and, and Ally come up with a straw man, which is, you know, roughly the key elements that would go into a form-based kind of a, of a zoning. And then we could decide, okay, does that fit the goals and objectives of the town meeting and the comprehensive plan and all the previous work done here? But again, recognizing that's probably not going to happen quickly and we ought to move quickly if we're trying to do something by the end of the year. I'm much more emphatic about requiring or wanting to have a preamble which sets the goals and objectives which have already been determined and are the ground rules that the planning board is working under to develop a bylaw. And once that, if that's clearly set out, I don't much care whether we go forward with the meeting, given those things, or we have the survey. I think it's important in both cases. And I would propose that it would be good to have both. But in the, the question is, how quickly can we have a meeting? How quickly can we have the survey out if we're trying to move quickly?
Catherine? Yes, Ally.
I just wanted to add one thing, because Warren just jogged my memory about how quickly. We were also thinking when we were discussing to have the public input meetings, that especially for the businesses in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, it might be better to have that public input when they're a little bit less busy in the fall, rather than having it in the middle of the summer. And that was also some of our thoughts with doing the survey first and then having the input after. And if the board, you know, really feels like, you know, they want to have the public be up to date and up to speed on what form-based code is, we can always include a link potentially to the meeting so that the public can view and have the chance to view the presentation that Chloe and then I followed up with did. So I mean, again, it's up to the board, but I just wanted to put those few things out there as well, since Warren jogged my memory.
Okay, this is Catherine, thank you, Ally. So, and that makes sense. It is the busy time for businesses, so they will be more available to work with us after Labor Day. That's very true. I want to, I want to, this might be throwing a monkey wrench into the works or it might not be, but I want to ask a question of Ally and Chloe and also the board. Because we were at the point when we were actually beginning to draft the, the new bylaw for West Chatham. Sarah worked with us in 2017 on, on putting together the design standards for the bylaws for all of the remaining neighborhood centers. So the design standards have already been determined and voted on by the board based on the previous community input and Sarah's work. The uses have already been looked at carefully and as I understand, you know, voted on by the board when we worked on it towards the end of the year in 2019 again. And again, that was based on all of the previous community input and then, you know, careful review by the board. So I'm wondering with those design standards and the uses, is it possible to, to do what Warren has suggested? Would it be possible, Chloe and Ally, to put together a straw man draft bylaw that incorporates form-based code and that the board can review that? And then we can even present that as part of the survey or in the community meeting? I mean, my question is, do you think we have enough information to do that? We don't have, I would agree that we don't have so much specific about some of the building forms. But I'm just wondering if based on the input we already have, could those be proposed? Let me put it that way. Either Chloe or Ally, maybe Chloe, would you like to respond first? Thank you.
Sure. I would say we could certainly come up with something. Again, it just will be a matter of how much those specifics reflect what the community wants to see if we don't necessarily have that input going forward. I understand, I completely understand that for a lot of things, you do have a lot of community input and we could build off of that certainly. And I think, I would just reiterate that we do intend to build off of it regardless. So I don't know if any other members of the staff at the commission have thoughts on this or Ally, but it's kind of, yeah, it's, we could, we could certainly go either way. It would just change up kind of timeline and process. So, but it's something we could explore either way, so.
Or, and again, this is Catherine again, could, is it possible to pull out the elements that you specifically don't have community input on? Like we've never asked them if they want dormers or porches or, you know, some of those very specific form questions that actually maybe were asked, you know, at some point during the visioning study in 2014, but we didn't specifically collect that information. So I'm wondering if, if those, if we build on what we have and take that as a given, as Warren is suggesting, but then just request the new information that we don't have. That's what I'm suggesting.
Sure, that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ally. No, I was just going to say, I just don't know if that might be a little confusing just to put out a draft bylaw that doesn't have all of the elements that we're seeking comment on. I, I just don't want to confuse people, I guess. Going forward, I want it to try to be as clean as possible. So yeah, that was just my initial thought, just because we don't have a lot, like you said, we do have a lot of public input, but we don't have a lot of the specifics on the form that people, you know, that, that input that people have for the form of the buildings and the, for the neighborhood center. But that's just my kind of off the cuff thought about that.
Okay. This is Catherine, I'll just respond, again, what I was suggesting, not necessarily, I'm suggesting a number of things. One suggestion is that we just request the new information. In other words, the board has already voted on the setbacks. So we shouldn't ask the question, what kind of setback do you want? That's already been processed, the board already considered it based on previous information. And we've already voted on it and determined that, you know, what the setback should be. It's already been determined that parking should be in the rear or on the side. And that if it's on the side, it needs to be, start at least 10 foot, 10 feet behind, you know, the, the beginning of the building. So all those things have already been worked on and determined. So what I'm suggesting is that we put out a survey that just asks the questions for which we don't have answers and that we haven't voted on already and that we haven't determined already, which would be questions specifically about form, such as the dormers and the porches and the, the roof and the, the different roof types and the length of the building facades. Those are questions that I understand we have not yet specifically asked or acted on. So that would be my suggestion. So let's continue going through the board about process. We brought up a number of ideas now. So Bob Wertschfter, were we, did we, did I ask you yet? And Warren came back, Warren was the last speaker.
I'm not sure what the question is. I think we're, we're, we're sort of zeroing in on, on refining the survey. I, I think it's fine to sort of explain that these are decisions we've already made. I, I just, I'm not sure that asking a question about dormers or, you know, I mean, dormers are fine if the building is, rest of the building looks nice. Or it's almost like we should be showing them a composite picture of different styles or different things and, and asking them, is this appropriate or not? And not, not individual components. But I, I'm going to leave this to, to the planning and to Ally and Cape Cod Commission because they've, they've done this more often than I have.
All right. All right, so I think what I'm dealing, so let's go to Bob Dubus. And I think, unfortunately, I think we've thrown out a lot of different ideas now of how to proceed. So I want to try to hone it down so we can get a sense of what the board would prefer. Sending the survey out right away is one course of action. Sending, determining what has already been established is another course of action that we want to do. Another idea would be to have the community forum meeting about form-based code first before we send out the survey. And so I'm just trying to get a sense of the board, how we'd like to proceed. I, I think we do need to remember that we have, we are in the process of considering using form-based code for West Chatham. But the rest of the community probably has never even heard of form-based code. So the first question we want to ask and present to the community is, we're considering using form-based code for, in the zoning, to create the new zoning bylaw in West Chatham. Likely it will be a hybrid of using traditional zoning in combination with form-based code. But this is what form-based code is and we want your feedback on using that in West. But this is what form-based code is, and we want your feedback on using that in West Chatham. And then getting some specific feedback from the community about the questions that have not yet been determined, which are more the form-specific questions. That would be my suggestion. Um, but I want to hear also from Bob Dubus and Roger, if you can.
Good, Bob Dubus here.
Yes.
I believe that we should have a summary of form-based code and or with visuals. And I don't suppose that it makes too much sense to send it out too early. Uh, have a meeting or send a package out and then have the um the survey go, go with it either at the end of it or shortly after the end. So people, people can see the visuals, see the form-based code, whether they read it. We have an instruction on on uh our channel 18 so that people can tune into it, uh, get some background on it. Or we could even have uh one more meeting with it. But I, unfortunately, having the visual meetings uh over the internet is not my, the greatest idea to have people watch and see things happen. It's much better when we're in the room discussing it between ourselves and looking out so they can visually see us out there. So, but I I believe you just can't send the package out and have them answer questions without some background. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob Dubus. This is Catherine again. Uh, Roger, do you have some comments?
I feel, I feel the same way as Bob.
All right, so some backgrounds, some kind of meeting.
Yeah, background, have a go, I I do, I think we need a little, I think we need a little catch-up, otherwise I think it's gonna, people, they could tend to get confused. I think sometimes, uh, someone else had mentioned, I don't know if we really have to get into this, like the, you know, coolers and dormers, but I think we could use a little catch-up to get people to feel good enough to really give us opinion like they're just comfortable. Because this, you know, even for me, this is all kind of, it's been several years for some of these other people. I think we could use, I think we could use a catch-up and get, you know, leave it up to, you know, Ally and, uh, you know, just get it out as soon as we can.
All right, thank you, Roger. So this is Catherine again. Ally and Chloe, I made some notes and I think the majority of the board members, I don't know if you'd like us to take a formal vote. Uh, we can certainly do that, but the majority of the board members are in favor of some kind of initial information and catch-up meeting first and then doing the survey. Uh, so let me know if you'd like me to take a formal vote of the board or if that suffices. Ally or Chloe?
Yep, I don't think we need a formal vote of the board.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So uh, so we'll revise the the process a bit. That we'll look to putting together an information meeting that will also put this in context of what's already been established. And and then after that, we can look to do the survey.
So I just had a question.
Sorry, Ally.
Did you, did you want to wait until the fall to have that information when, session, when everyone is a little less busy? Or I just wanted to kind of know what timing wise we're thinking.
Well, this is Catherine. Let me ask you this. If we waited till the fall to do that, would we still be able to meet the the deadline, the goals of having the draft of the bylaw by the end of the year? And then all the rest of the processing that we need to do with that draft done in time for annual town meeting 2021?
I'm gonna ask Chloe that question.
All right, thank you.
We can certainly try for an answer. Um, I think we, we definitely want to make sure we, we do this in the order that makes the most sense. Um, so if if that's what it is and and we need to wait until after Labor Day for that, um, I think, I think we'll just have to kind of work with that.
All right, yeah, yes, who is this?
This is Tom Gagin.
Hi, Tom. Please go ahead.
I think the fall is just around the corner.
You know, I was looking at it, it's August 17th. Uh, so how many weeks away is September 7th? I mean, after, so maybe we could schedule it for right after Labor Day. Um, and that's really not, um, that's not that far away. And that might be what it would end up being anyway, uh, because.
Two, two weeks, Tom Gagin.
Two weeks. It's actually three weeks.
Three weeks, sorry, three weeks.
It's three weeks. So Ally and Chloe, I I think practically speaking, probably the soonest you could put that together might be a week earlier than the three weeks. This would be, so we'd want to schedule the meeting during the week of beginning September 7th, which is Labor Day. Can I get your comments on that?
So Catherine, yeah, we would just have to, I'd have to, you know, do some more research and coordination um to make sure that a um a date after Labor Day would be available, and I'd have to get back to the board on that.
All right, because otherwise we're looking at, you know, next week or the week after. Um, and we have our planning board meeting on August 24th, so we'd have to do it on, again, have a special meeting on some other night, which is certainly fine with me. Um, or the week after, or, so I guess I'm just, I I would agree with Tom Gagin that on a practical level, we might be looking at that week after Labor Day anyway.
Yeah, and I think that if we're going to do the public input, we would want to do a lot of outreach. So we'd want to send, you know, letters and things like that to the business owners, to the associations, um, put it up, you know, online, do a press release, things like that. So that, that all takes a little bit of time to do, um, so.
Yeah, so from a practical point, maybe setting the goal of the week after Labor Day or possibly the next week, which is the week starting September 14th. And then if we can also look at it that in the context of that meeting, the survey will be distributed at that time, we could even ask them to return it to us at the end of the meeting somehow. Um, so unless you'll be, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this is, this is Katie, yes. So the 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 meeting will still have to be a virtual meeting. It's not going to be a, an in-person community input session at this point in time. So it's still going to be a meeting held through Teams um or perhaps Zoom if we needed a larger platform. Um, and my suggestion would be is that the survey would be ready to go at that meeting that we can, you know, put a link, um, you know, that we can email to people or something along those lines so that there is a quicker turnaround. Um, but I I do think that we need to um do a little bit more outreach. And so we may not be looking at September 8th. We may be looking a little bit further into September just based on the the idea of doing enough outreach um to get a good broad um, broad base of input for that community session. So the other thing I wanted to mention, and Ally had mentioned this um briefly, um, and somebody else may have mentioned it as well, is, is the other idea would be to perhaps by putting the survey up online with a a small video showing um part of the presentation for tonight, m- more streamlined to show what form-based code is and even perhaps a, you know, just a, a few slides about where the planning board has already gotten to. Um, you know, what the, what the votes have already been, and then putting that video up with um, you know, with the same link as the survey so that people could educate themselves prior to um, you know, prior to uh taking the survey. Um, it was just a thought that I had. I thought I'd throw it out there, but I just, I, it just in the interest of time. I know that um we have been, you know, it, we've been working on this for quite a while and trying to get this moved forward. Um, but with um the issues with COVID-19, obviously, we've had to postpone that a few times, and then we had issues with um, you know, having this, the the last meeting that was scheduled. So we are, we are somewhat of a time constraint. So just in the interest of time, I'm just looking at alternatives to potentially hosting or pu- pushing it back too far, I guess is my concern.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, did Chloe want to make a comment or?
Um, if you don't mind, I was gonna throw, I know, um, I'm not trying to complicate things more, but one other option is that um we could refine the survey but release that, you know, in a couple of weeks or so. But then while the survey is out and running, we could still host that um kind of informational forum. So if people felt like it and they felt like they wanted to attend prior to taking the survey, they could. But also, um, then the survey could kind of get out there sooner and and be out for a bit longer time. So just one more option. I don't know um if people would like to consider that.
Yeah, um, so, hmm, this is Catherine. So what we're looking at now is doing a couple of approaches at once. Maybe if I could suggest to integrate what Katie and Chloe are saying, that in the context of announcing the public meeting, which may be, say, it may be after September 14th, in the context of that announcement, that also a video uh from, perhaps from this meeting that gives a brief description of form-based code is included, plus the basic survey questions, but also with the presentation of what's already been determined and decided and processed. You know, that this is in that context, that the survey questions are presented in that context. Um, but then still have the community meeting um on September 14th. I'm not sure if this is just gonna confuse the process and confuse the issue. Um, I'm not sure. Um, Bob Wertschafter has a comment?
Well, I I do. I think I I agree with Chloe's approach that we work uh to get the survey ready and that we uh leave the survey out for response um as in, and we have the uh meeting during that period that it's out for response. So people can either um get the survey after they attend the meeting or they can get some information to allow. So I I like Chloe's timeline.
All right, so that we will still have a community meeting by Zoom or by Teams sometime in September, but we'll put the survey out prior to that with a video. Is that what you're suggesting, Bob?
Yep.
I'm sorry, it was, did you say yes? It wasn't clear.
I am.
All right, great. Uh, so maybe if I could just quickly run through the board again and see if everyone agrees with that approach, uh, which is kind of a a dual-pronged approach. So Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, I agree.
All right, great. And Warren?
This is Warren Chain. I agree with that.
Great. And Bob Wertschafter has already agreed. And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus agrees.
And Roger?
Roger Griffin agrees.
Okay, and this is Catherine. I agree. So we'll, we'll use the two-pronged approach that's been suggested. Um, great. So now I think we're done with the board discussion. I will ask if there are any members of the public or other, uh, anyone connected to the call who would like to make a comment or who has a question, um, let me know and I'm happy to recognize you.
Madam Chair, it's Peter. I'll be quick.
Yes, no, go ahead. You don't have to be quick. Go ahead, Peter.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate this. This meeting was, it was, it was well done. I I I understand how you go around and around to try and uh come up with a decision. I think you did a, a good one. Now, wh- one other uh point I would like, maybe as a citizen for you guys to consider, is what is West Chatham? Uh, we showed the chart of what we have now, uh, the first chart, I guess the first showed at the beginning where the red outlines were. There's an area that 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 what we were going to consider back a couple of years ago, which is right across, right across from Dunkin' Donuts. That's the fishermen, that's the business that's there, and then there's a habitat for humanity that is there. The reason it was left out is because the zoning at that time was uh, was uh, uh, with, it was a small business. And we eliminated small business. But I, if you, you might want to consider that as part of all the West Chatham. And the other point I'd make is if you look at those charts, there really aren't any single-family homes. Uh, the couple that are there are now Habitat for Humanity homes, uh, and others that are going to be built. So uh, I think you're going in the right way and I, hopefully, and I hope you can make it by next, next fall. That'd be great. There's a lot of work that's been done on this and a lot of good thinking you guys have been doing. Thank you.
This is Catherine. Thank you, Peter. Um, I'll just comment on your question that when the board and along with Ally, when we reviewed again the responses from the community about where the boundaries for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center should be, uh, from the work that was done in 2014 and and subsequently by the Planning Board and Community Development Department in 2015, it was very clear that the community did not want to include the area that you're suggesting. So that's why we're presenting these bound, these boundaries as they are.
Um, Madam Chair, just to follow up.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand that. And that was a, that was a, a, a area contention and it was some consideration we weren't going to do that at the time. But we're now a few years into it, and there is a Habitat for Humanity place there that wasn't there before. There is a business there that wasn't there before. And we have the the Hook Fishermen, which, if they were included in and and uses were used properly, could, could maybe have an apartment or two in there, I thought, because what, you know, and and it's just a different area. So, I mean, it's up to you guys. That's, I'll, I'll make my case. That was my case.
All right, great. Um, so I'll invite the board to reconsider that, you know, when we, when we look at the bound, the neighborhood boundaries again. Thank you, Peter. Anyone else who would like to make a comment, who hasn't spoken?
Yes, um, my name's Tom Wilson and I live in West Chatham, and I've been listening, and I would like to make a comment.
Please go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, um, after a couple of hours of listening to this, I think all of Chatham recognizes the the housing crisis that's here and that we need to take steps fairly quickly to address it. I I think as you go forward with your survey, go forward with your video and your, and your public sessions, I think one of the questions that needs to be made or that needs to be answered or or made clearer is, how does form-based coding help Chatham address the lack of attainable and affordable housing? Um, as opposed to just trying to develop projects one-off um a- and 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 do it that way? I mean, I've, I've listened for a couple of hours and I'm not 100% clear that that doing something on form-based is gonna get us more affordable housing. And I think if you can make that clear to the public, you'll get a lot more support for it, um, for the form-based. That's my comment.
Catherine, sorry, it's Ally. I just wanted to make a comment on.
Yes, go ahead, Ally.
And Chloe and other Cape Cod Commission staff, if you want to also jump in for this. I think that one of the reasons why the planning board was initially interested in form-based code um was that normally when people opposed or citizens oppose projects, um, it's, it, a lot of times it comes up, well, what's it gonna look like? What's, what's the, you know, structure gonna look like? How is it going to affect the neighborhood? And form-based code really um lays upfront kind of what the structure can and can't look like. And so there's that fear that's kind of taken away. So when people think of multifamily or mixed use or things like that, we don't want them to think that it's just gonna be a box. Um, and so that kind of takes that first fear factor out of the equation, um, hopefully with form-based code. And that was kind of a a draw, a draw, I believe, for the planning board when we first discussed it. And I don't know, Chloe or anyone else, if you have any comments on that, but I just wanted to kind of make that um clear.
Thank you, Ally. This is Catherine. Chloe or, did you want to comment as well?
Um, no, I I would just uh reiterate. Um, no, I would just reiterate that that can be an effective use of form-based code by kind of getting that conversation, having that conversation upfront in terms of the forms of the buildings and then kind of, yeah, having that assurance that Ally's buildings will be built to those standards can kind of help move, move various uses forward in an area. I don't know if anyone else from the Commission staff has comments, but I think Ally put it, put it well.
Yes. Anyone else? This is Catherine. Anyone else like to comment?
I would just, this is Tom Wilson again. I would just like to say that that explanation works very well, and I think it should be included as part of your public discourse. The fact that many people opposed multifamilies because they were afraid of how it looked. But now here, if we institute form-based, we can see how things are going to look before we move forward. That's a great explanation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Yes, Martha, please go ahead.
I just, I don't want to drag the meeting out any longer, but I just wanted to build on what Mr. Wilson said, because I think that the discussion about the survey and then the discussion about the tool to implement, what, implement what people want to see in town are almost, right now, they're, they're kind of on two different planes, and then we hope to merge them. So what I envision with the survey is to find out what do people want, what is their vision for West Chatham? What forms, what design do they want to see? And then it's, and it's almost a technical question really for the Planning Board and for other stakeholders. Does form-based code, is this, we, we might think there are some ways that form-based code is advantageous over traditional zoning to, to get to that vision. And I think that, I think it's important to keep the two different, or right now, the two different aspects in mind. What's the vision and what's the tool to get them done? And just sort of building on what, what Mr. Wilson just, just brought to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha, yes. Yes, please go ahead, Tom.
Catherine, Tom Gagin, to speak to Tom Wilson's point about the town, about the town trying to encourage more affordable housing, one of the fears of that neighborhood, if I lived in that neighborhood, if someone started talking about 6,000 square foot apartment building, the image that comes to mind is not aesthetically pleasing. So if we follow a form-based code and we are allowing some incentives to maybe build somewhat larger building for apartments, and it has angles and dormers and porches, and, you know, dormers and couplas, that would probably fits an aesthetic that is more saleable to the neighbors.
Right. This is Catherine, thank you, Tom. Good. So I think that's a very clear explanation. I think, Ally, what you said is just right on point, that there's often a lot of fear associated with certain ideas, like multifamily housing. But when people see the form of it, rather than simply the function, and see that it's aesthetically pleasing, that it can be done in a way that's compatible with the character of Chatham, and is aesthetically pleasing, it relieves a lot of that concern. So that is a big advantage of form-based code. Any other comments from the public? Anyone listening who would like to make a comment or has a question? All right, hearing none, then I do want to move on to one other item that we have on our agenda. And that is that we didn't complete the reorganization of the board, because we were waiting for Roger to join us officially. But it is the tradition on the Town of Chatham Planning Board that the newest member usually takes on the position of clerk. So we want to complete the reorganization of the board that we did, I think, a couple of meetings back now. And in that regard, I would like to nominate Roger Griffin to be our clerk. And do I have a second for that nomination, and then we'll take a formal vote?
Warren Chain, I second the motion.
Great. So let's take a formal vote. And Tom Gagin, how do you vote?
Uh, yea.
And Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, yea.
And Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, yea.
And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, yea.
And Roger, you may also vote. I think you have, you're on mute.
Yeah, yeah, Roger Griffin, sorry, got it.
And this is Catherine, I also vote yea. So Roger, we're again happy to welcome you to the Planning Board and happy to have you as our clerk.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And so there being no other discussion, Bob Wertschafter, did you want to make a comment?
I just want to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second?
Warren Chain, I second the motion.
Thank you. So let's take a vote. Tom Gagin?
Agree.
Warren?
Warren Chain, agree.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, agree.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, agree.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, agree.
And this is Catherine, I agree that we should adjourn the meeting, and it is 8:30 PM. Thank you all very much for your participation. Thanks in particular to the team from the Cape Cod Commission. We appreciate all the work that you've been doing on our behalf. Thank you, Ally and Katie also for joining us, and everyone enjoy the rest of the evening.